Which was supposed to have happened last time and didn't. So those are the three big items. So the first order of business is to approve the minutes of August.
Um, I'm sorry, Gary.
Yeah?
Could, um, I asked that we include other business after announcements?
Sure.
Or public comment, maybe, if somebody turns up.
Okay.
Cause one of the items that we just handed out is other business.
Oh.
So what do you want to put in?
Is that the?
That's the thing about the line extension.
Oh, okay, I put that under announcements, but that's other business?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's cool, so let's do it after, so that will be the new E.
The new E, okay.
Yeah, we, I think, I don't know.
Okay. All right. Anything else that needs to be added to the agenda? I'm supposed to ask that, aren't I?
Yeah.
It's only been like thirty meetings in a row that I haven't asked that, so.
That's all right.
I'm turning over a new leaf.
Okay.
Okay, so first order of business is to approve the minutes of August eighth, which was our last meeting.
So moved.
Second, yeah. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say.
I just have a request. Just a reminder again that the minutes have to say draft.
Yes.
Mine do, so it's probably a copying.
I think.
Oh, wait, no, 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 sorry, my math wrong.
I think it literally is something that just dropped out.
Yeah, I got kind of like a dirty look.
Yeah, no, mine is.
Yeah.
Oh, is that something you do when you're copying, the copying stuff?
It's just, yeah, we were running.
I think the toner's low.
The toner's low.
Cause it shows on mine, I think, is it not clear?
Oh, okay.
So it is a big little secret, yeah, we'll make sure that it's really clear next.
Yeah.
So you convert the minutes from draft to final just by leaving some toner out of the copier?
Yeah, we're just lifting up the end of the photocopy at whenever it does it.
Yeah, okay. Anything else? Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, the minutes have been passed. And you can see that we had some lively discussions last time. Okay. Next order of business is announcements. As you can see, oh, the first announcement is that the report on rethinking Rattler's commercial districts is, uh, now should that say draft? Or is that final?
No, it's draft.
It's draft.
Okay.
It's a final draft, but it's not the final final.
Okay, so this is the draft of the final report.
Yes.
On rethinking Rattler's commercial districts has been printed and handed out. The one that we didn't have to print off.
This is from Roger.
Yes, this is from Roger, right.
And so we're not planning to talk about this tonight, but just to, if everybody could spend some time reading it and jotting down comments and questions in between now and the next meeting. I believe that's what we'll do is talk about it next meeting, so. Right about here, so.
In the date of that?
Pardon?
The date of the next one?
Of our next meeting is...
September twelve.
Yeah. Okay. And other announcements, James has an announcement.
Yes, I'm also on the DRB, which is the Developmental Review Board. We are short members, and if you're watching this, presumably you're interested in zoning and...
Or...
Or Gary's witty jokes and...
Or you can't sleep, that's really...
Or you can't sleep. But being on the DRB is an opportunity to see to it that people follow the regulations and the things that we draft here to ensure that development is reasonable and that developers are reasonable. So, if you have time every third Monday, join the DRB.
So the DRB schedule is...
Public service announcement, number one, point six, seven, eight.
Is once a month still?
Once a month, every third Monday, seven o'clock, usually a couple hours unless it's a contentious issue. But you get to be involved with contentious issues, so.
And there are seven members?
There are seven members, and if you joined, you'd become an alternate, and that would mean that every time a member has a conflict of interest, which actually happens rather frequently, you'd be voting, and if you apply and become the first alternate, you'll probably vote, I would say, thirty or forty percent of votes, so.
Okay, and Joe and Timberly have been members of the DRB, and James is now. Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Any other announcements? Okay, hearing none, and we have no members of the public here for public comment, so we will move right to other business. Rod, would you like to?
Okay, so before you, you should have a memo from me outlining on... Did you not get a memo?
No, I just...
Uh, just the application, yes, all right. Okay, let me do this vividly then. So what you have is an application before you from a company called Laura's Indul Design, and they're using the opportunity of applying for a loan from the Vermont Economic Development Authority, which is a state agency designed to support existing businesses and new businesses grow in Vermont. And they're proposing to relocate from Gilford to the Book Press Building, which is controlled by Rattler Development Corporation, and that lies behind Agway off of Putney Road on Brown Floyd. It's a ceramic design and manufacturing company, has an international market. The idea here is that I, but then by taking more space, they can increase their production and increase their staff from two full-time equivalents to add further five over the next five years. And so, the process here is one whereby for them to be able to submit their application to VITA, the Vermont Economic Development Authority, they need to have the planning commission review the project. In this case, it's then like taking renting space at the Book Press and having their operations based there. And there are four questions that the planning commission gets to review. The first is, will a proposed project violate the existing zoning ordinance, land use plans, or other land use regulations? And the answer here is no, it won't. And that's because the Book Press Building is zone industrial, this is a light industry use, and so it's a conforming use, and doesn't make any challenges to the existing zoning ordinance. The second question is, does the proposed project accord with the duly adopted municipal land use plan? And yes, it does, for the reasons that I just outlined. It's an activity that's happening in an industrially zoned area and in accordance with that zoning district's list of permitted uses. The third question is, will a proposed project involve any unusual costs on the community, such as water, or sewer, or street extension, or other costs? And in this case, it's an existing building that has existing infrastructure. And so the answer to that is no, it won't involve any extra costs to the community. And then the fourth question is, will a proposed project or industrial park be in the best interest of the community? And if so, for what reasons? And do you support it or not support it? In support of this application, I would just point out that there's an existing goal in the town plan that seeks, that the planning commission should support, and the town should support, the expansion of existing businesses. And so it's consistent with that goal. So it's consistent with explicit language in the existing town plan. There's no conflict or contradiction between the project and the town plan when it comes to land use regulations or other matters. What it does do is, by supporting this application, the town is supporting an existing local business. It's creating up to five full-time equivalent positions within the next five years, and the business is well-located regarding the existing infrastructure. So there are good reasons to support the application.
It's also a creative.
Yes.
Industry.
It's a...
Arts.
It is a creative industry business. Because the call on design is the basic element of the business, so.
And they're creating five jobs in addition to the two that exist?
Yeah.
They also won in the BDCC business.
Yes.
Competition, they won first place in the...
So if you're, so I gave you copies of the, basically the one-page form. And so if you're happy with, if you have any more questions, and I also gave you a copy of the, of what they're proposing to do, which is another part of the packet for VITA. If you have any further questions, I can answer them for you hopefully now. Or I think at this point, we can do a couple of things. We can hold it up to the end of the meeting so that you can peruse the packet that I've just given you. Or you can make a decision to support this now. And in those terms, I'd like it framed as a formal motion so that there's a formal motion in the minutes as well as your signatures on this original form.
So is there a motion to, um...
I have a question first.
Yeah.
So this, this, they submit this, and then they get like a no-interest loan or a one percent interest loan for a hundred and eighty thousand dollars?
I don't know the terms of the loan, I'm assuming that it would have to be...
It's not a grant, it's a loan.
It's definitely a loan. And it's a low-interest loan, which means it would have to be a very low-interest loan. Because the overnight rate at this point is itself very low. So, um... So, yeah, that's basically what it's for. And then what this allows them to do is to do the fit out on that part of the premises that they're leasing from BDCC, as well as other, you know, other business classes.
So I would ask if there's a motion to approve this application. So moved.
Second.
Was there any discussion, any questions?
That's a really nice product, I mean, glitching here from California.
Oh, originally California.
Originally Gilford.
But I, I can have a five plate with a spider on it personally.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay, so I'm gonna hand along, it's not a very elaborate form, but something that is gonna be the original, and I'm gonna get you to sign the bottom of it. And is that good?
Thank you. One thing I didn't ask is if everybody, I think everybody knows everybody now, right? There's no, we've got sort of a delayed start to our, staggered start, I guess, to our commission here, but Joe, you know everybody?
I don't know who's that, or are you behind the camera?
Okay. She's hiding under a baseball hat.
Yeah.
So the next item on our agenda is one that was on our last week's agenda, but we didn't get to, and it's, um... Some time to discuss the results of the sustainability meeting that we had at the request of the, of the select board on July twenty-fifth. And I think to, to start this off, I would ask people to bring up any questions or comments they have on the, on the accounting of the meeting that's, that's in the handout. You know, everybody has the handout, I assume, from a couple meetings ago? Or the last meeting, I should say.
No, I don't, I don't. I didn't get it before either.
Yeah, if you came in a meeting, you weren't, you weren't here.
That's this.
That's this.
I'll give you another copy.
Oh.
Didn't we?
Plan for Rattler two thousand and eleven. You came to that, didn't you? The thing that was left behind on July twenty-fifth.
Share yours.
Thank you.
So, does anybody wanna start off with comments or questions or reflections?
I have a question, too. You just asked, we wanted to discuss what the results were, and I was curious initially going into it, what were the goals?
Well, really, um, let me just... I mean, the purpose of the meeting was to follow the, the select board's...
Directive.
Directive, yeah, yeah.
To...
Well, to create a forum so that town committee members and the public can see how sustainability is being addressed in the town plan process. And to gather ideas and suggestions from all present on ways to incorporate more actions consistent with sustainability values as we continue work on the plan. And, you know, part of the idea was to, well, the main idea was to get as many people that are on town boards and committees and commissions to, to come and...
Participate.
And participate, yeah. So, you know, as you see in the first paragraph, there were fifty-nine people there. And there is a list of...
Did that count us? Cause I counted sixty-six. Not to struggle over a fine point, but...
It did include us, but there were some people who didn't sign in, so we tried to recreate the best we could, so.
I counted at one point. Actually, there was probably more than sixty-six, cause I wrote plus, cause a few people came in.
Don't tell the graduate center that.
Huh?
Don't tell the graduate center that. That's why fifty-nine's a good number.
Fifty-nine is exactly the right number every time.
Oh, I see. Oh, oh, I see.
No, but really, I mean, it was based on, we tried to...
Not to stop.
Yes, can never be more than fifty-nine.
So in the sign-in sheets are, in the packet, so. And we are all signed in.
I was glad that you put it as appendix C, but you included Kate Anderson's email that she said, because when we went around the room to look for input from other committees, there really wasn't anybody there from the arts committee in per se, or anybody who was ready to speak. And I guess it would have been nice to have some of this read, it was kind of long, but, but at least it's here for us afterwards, cause that was pretty important, I think.
Yeah. That was, you know, I could wish that we had read it, or somebody had read it. And I wasn't that aware of it, so.
Yeah.
But here it is, I mean, you know, the, the purpose was to, um... Well, I think the purpose was, was carried out in any case. So any other questions, comments?
Well, there's a lot of bulleted items here, I don't know how you wanna cover them and discuss it. Like...
Yeah.
Under each of the four breakout sessions, there's all these bulleted things, I looked them, but I...
Well, I, I think, I mean, one of the things that I wrote down was it will be interesting to see how we respond to and use those bulleted items, you know?
Right.
What we do with them.
Well, some of them are realistic, some of them are already done, and maybe people weren't aware of them.
Yeah.
I just wondered what the process would be to review them.
It, it seems like we will sit and review them at some point, you know, I don't know what meeting, soon.
But not now.
Not now. But I think if you have any general comments about them, or, you know, I mean, that's a good question. So this would be a good, this is a very good thing to bring out.
Yeah, well, I just thought, you know, that some of them are good ideas, some of them are unrealistically achievable, not achievable. Some of them are already probably done, or members of the commission might have ideas about them. So I think there should be a time when we discuss them.
Yeah, okay.
Do you, okay.
It's like when we've had other input, like at the kickoff event, there was a lot of the same kind of feedback that we got from people who were at that event. And some of those things have been actually already put in the town, different sections of the town plan that we've talked about. It would be nice, when we have a finished draft of the, you know, to kind of go, you know, look back and forth and see if some of these things are reasonable to be included, or if they are, you know, kind of to check to see if we've used it as a reference point.
One thing that Rod and I had talked about was kind of taking some of these items and putting them in a chart kind of of what's already included, what we think would be open for discussion, and then even those things that we don't think is appropriate for the town plan, and then you could respond to that, and do that at the next.
I think that would be great, you know, you know, maybe we could also get those before a meeting and maybe even respond by email to some extent to them. Because we could spend probably quite a long while going through these lists, but it would be, I think, valuable for everybody to read them, and it would be great to have them organized in a way that we can respond to accordingly.
So I think what I might do is take business comments and use those as, as categories. So we should be able to identify the things that are already happening. We should be able to identify the things that are very obviously impractical. And we should be able to identify, you know, the rest, which might be useful to include or useful to review. And just sort of, so three, sort of three columns or three categories, or three different shapes instead of a dot.
Yeah, there may be some that are already included in chapters.
There are a lot, so, and so we can just put that as a filter on all of the items.
Yeah.
Which is, and because you'll have had the original, and what we do, we've got to figure out if you're comfortable with that. I think it might be, although that's what the planning commission wants to do with the documentation from the meeting, I think what would be useful for us is if you're comfortable with what this is as a summary of the actual meeting. This more than satisfies the request of the select board, but we feel that it is probably important to convey some kind of documentation to the select board. So if you're happy with this going forward to them, then we can see to whether that's done sooner rather than later.
I, I think that's good, and I think, well, I'll speak for myself about it, but I also think it would be good to convey to the, to the select board what we're gonna do with it, too, you know? Cause I think that even though that isn't necessarily what they asked us for, and in some cases, it might be more information than they want to hear, cause they don't wanna micromanage what we do.
Right.
But I think it would be good for them to know that we found it useful and that we will make use of, of the input that people, I mean, a lot of people came out, and a lot of people spoke and wrote, and so I think it's good always to make sure that that word gets out to those concerned, you know, that we're gonna use that information, so.
I would find, think it would be useful for them to have that summary that we're talking about, still doing. That you could have the notes from the meeting, I don't think they have to have the list of everybody who was there necessarily. And then include the letter from Kate that people there didn't see, and then have that summary with the columns.
I'm not sure that I agree that this chart that we're making should be public yet, because we, we wanna discuss it first.
Right.
The summary is a great summary, but that kind of working chart will be something that we'll be working through. And we really wouldn't wanna have people kibbasing on it before we've really discussed it.
We want this to be timely, too, you know?
Yeah, so they can help us now.
So I'm figuring just, if you, if you think this does constitute a reasonable, a reasonable summary of the meeting, just forward this to them now.
Does, does anybody have any comments or questions about anything that's in this summary?
I'm surprised how much horse and buggy recommendations there were.
Yeah.
There are a lot of horses and buggies in there.
I'd just say leave out appendix A, again, just, which is all the sign-in sheets, I don't think that's particularly necessary. I was actually surprised that that was there. We've gotten summaries from other, like when we did the kickoff event, we didn't have the list of sign-ins.
I've got them all. I just figured, because this was something that we would forward to another board, it could be interesting.
Seems at least a peg for myself, but it's all right. I mean, it makes me wonder if we're starting a new sort of procedure that every time we have, I mean, like in the Roger Hawks, I mean, he did many presentations, and we don't have all the sign-in sheets from those here.
Yeah, we do.
You have them.
We have them.
You have them, but we don't get them as part of the reports, that's, that's the difference. You have them, but we don't get them as part of the reports. That's, that's the difference. You always have them.
Right.
But I'm questioning the need to put them always in reports, and this is the first time we've ever had it, to us.
Yeah, I mean, again, because it was another board that asks, asked the Planning Commission to hold the meeting. That's why I did it. I didn't consider it a new procedure, yeah.
I mean, I, I wouldn't mind them seeing who was there, several of, or a few of them were there.
Right.
They would have seen that, but it might be interesting for.
I think it can, they, I mean, I think, you know, if they scan it, they'll get a sense of who was present, which could be useful for them.
I'm not that you can't even read. Maybe it's.
Oh.
Just might be bad.
Probably easier to just send them what's been presented, rather than stapling an unstaplinged list.
So, do you want to, so you want to go ahead with just sending to them then?
Yeah.
That's the recommendation? Great.
Well, I don't know if we need a motion or anything, but I think that's.
No, good.
Okay by everybody?
Great, thank you.
And so we'll. What, what would be the sense of the department about when we'll be talking about the bullet points?
Should we set a time?
I can get it. I mean, I can do it up quick tomorrow or Wednesday, and get it to you by the end of the week, and then come out at the next meeting.
And we can do it at our next meeting.
The next meeting, yeah. Great, thanks.
I think that would be good while it's still fresh and fresh-ish.
Yeah. Ish.
Nothing's fresh. I'm speaking for myself. Okay.
Okay, great.
Well, anything else about this? Okay.
So, one, one question. So, the idea is that with all this information, that we are going to talk about it, summarize it, and then devote it included in the plan, or does this, does this?
Well, we're going to categorize it first, you know, and some of it is included in the plan already. And then it will be looking at to see what things are appropriate to, that we think are appropriate to include in the plan, you know, in future writing in the plan.
So, what does the public have to do with this? Do they, are they going to be aware of this? Are they going to be part of that process? They're not here, so they don't, doesn't matter, again?
Well, they're, they're the ones that wrote these things down. I mean, it, it, all the stuff that we go through, I mean, we've churned through a lot of stuff, you know, and it's all, it's all in the, in the record, you know, so.
Yeah, but, you know, when I, when I look at all this stuff, it just seems like gobs and gobs of information. Although a summary would help. I don't know, if, if the public, if they wanted to be engaged, it seems like there are better ways to present this to them, to get them to be a part of this, because, you know, it's one thing to sit here and make decisions, but then when they come back and complain later and say, or, you know, can this change, or how, how does, you know what I mean, to, to avoid stuff like that, to make sure everyone's happy and whatever? Is there a better way to, instead of just passing around pamphlets? I mean, is it, I don't know, I'm asking.
Well, we're going to sit and talk about these things, you know.
At the next meeting. And in theory, they would be here if they had something.
Yeah, I mean, it's going to be on our agenda, and everybody that, just so you know, everybody that has participated in any of the forums that we've had, and we've had lots and lots of them, get notice of, of our agendas, you know, and part of the reason for that is because if somebody was at a meeting about conservation, and they're interested in that topic, and then the land use chapter of the plan is going to be talked about in our meeting, then they know. They get that. They get an email that says that that's going to happen. So, I mean.
Yeah.
You know, we, we do what we can.
Yeah, yeah, I know.
And, you know, I think that this is one of, you know, probably, well, I don't know, you know, a couple dozen of these kinds of things where there's been input, so.
Yeah.
We're kind of synthesizing and.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
Would this be something, when you send it to us, that you also send it to, we're not all the same people who get the, the minute, get the agenda for our meetings, and then the attachments with all the packet things, so that, again, if they wanted to come to that meeting.
Yeah. You'll, you'll get it first, because I'll do it the next day or so. They'll get it when the whole packet for the meeting goes out.
So, that list of people, then hypothetically, is something like everyone that comes to any of these forums inclusive? In other words, someone who went to one or two, but not all of them, they're on the list?
Yep, yeah.
And also, it would somehow include that list of people, fifty-nine, that were at the forum?
Yep.
And how does, how do others, following Timberley's point there? Because really, it is, it's just amazing. From the DRB experience, as at least three of us can attest to, there's always somebody out there at the DRB point, because that seems to be after the fact, once all these rules and changes were made. And that's when they're, and that's when they're going, like, the two-by-four effect, and they're going, wow, and they're always trying to figure out way back to where this point occurred, and they wish they could have, should have been sitting there going, you want to do what? No, I don't, I don't agree with that. How do you? I, I hear what Gary's saying, do everything you can to reach those people, but how can we do something about it? It's, I, I've noticed it's an automatic, that, on the public participation, it's just a given, no one's there, but.
Well, I mean.
It is when we do ordinance, though.
Is it really?
Yeah, we have public particip, like, when we did the fluvial erosion zone, the suggested one, that eventually was a failure, there was significant participation from people who would be affected.
Yeah.
I think this is less.
Impactful?
Yeah, because really, even whatever we put in the plan is still advisory in most circumstances.
You mean from this meeting, right?
Yeah. Well, from, I mean, the plan is, the, the plan is not an ordinance, you know. I mean, the plan may be pre-ordinance, but it doesn't mean that's what's going to happen, you know.
That's what I was.
The other thing is it's.
I'm sorry. Right. Well, that's what I was saying about the original question of the goals, and what we're, what were we supposed to get out of that? As Kalina has pointed out, we've got a good stack of papers. And, and, and were we supposed to glean something out of these couple hundred bullet points or whatever, and come up with the best twenty or thirty, or best X number that we thought we wanted to forward to as official recommendations of the Planning Commission?
No.
It's, it's really for our information.
Okay.
You know, and, and our use for the, for.
Shaping the.
The plan, yeah.
Around sustainability in particular.
So, more of a matter of quality, not quantity of ideas. That if somebody has a good idea, we should recognize it, and if it hasn't already.
I think one of the concerns that we have here is, which is part of the reason why the term sustainability was avoided from the outset, was that it's very broad in its application and its meaning, and it can mean one thing to one person, and something entirely different to another. And so, there's no one paragraph or no one section of the plan that isn't affected or influenced by considerations of sustainability, so when you're thinking about it from the standpoint of producing a document, it's not like having a discussion around transportation, for instance, which is a pretty distinct field of endeavor and activity, and corresponds to a chapter, and has a, a map that's associated with it. So, there's a very clear path for a planning commission to discuss something like transportation that goes from what is the idea about, of transportation all the way through, to showing you what you need to include in the plan for transportation to meet the requirements of statute, and to be able to receive approval from the Regional Planning Commission. Something as loaded and difficult to, you know, define as a term like sustainability means that it's not going to, it's not, it, it doesn't lend itself to the same kinds of formalized public outreach process, which is in fact, you know, part why we ended up having this meeting, and, and because it was in response to public concern about the wanting the opportunity to actually discuss it. Insofar as we need to satisfy the Select Board's request, we were requested to hold a meeting. It was the only instruction that we were given.
And gather ideas.
All right.
Yeah. And it, you know, was, I think, a good opportunity.
No, 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 I want to restate that. We weren't asked to gather ideas. We were asked to hold a meeting. So, the people, so the members, all, the members of all boards and committees could discuss sustainability with reference to the town plan.
Well, but our, our stated purpose, though, included that.
Right.
I mean, we, so the, the official motion was that the Planning Commission hold a public meeting and invite all town committees to discuss the issue of sustainability related to the town plan. In the spirit of the motion, I think, my opinion, was that, you know, we would gather ideas and suggestions from all present on ways to incorporate more actions consistent with sustainability values as we continue work on the plan. So, that wasn't, I don't think, something that we had to necessarily report on. But for us, for our purposes, and for satisfying what I think the, the public would think was the point of the meeting, that's what we're doing, so.
This, this, the motion was made at the Select Board meeting when Tim Stevenson presented, asking the Select Board to create a town. Sustainability Commission, or something, something like that.
They denied it, but so they.
They denied it. They really didn't vote on it. They all just said they were not in favor of it, and they encouraged people to come and join other committees and commissions that the town already has in order to be sure that sustainability was included. And so, Dora made a motion to have a meeting with the Planning Commission, people and all the committees, and anybody from the public to then discuss sustainability as it relates to the town plan.
So, where we are is we have decided that this be forwarded, this report be forwarded to the Select Board, and, and then we'll, we'll go through the bullet points, and they'll get organized, and then when Sue sends them out, if everybody could please, when you get a chance, comment. And, and also write down comments, so that we can have a, a pretty efficient and effective discussion of that, of that list at our next meeting. Okay.
That's a list for that suggestion. And just for Joe, I know you've only been to two meetings, but all, a lot through the winter, in the spring, just so you know, we have had lots of people here. Lots of people have come to, when we had a meeting, when we were, say, just talking about transportation and energy.
Specific things, right.
Specific things, and again, because those people were notified, anybody who's come to anything related to the town plan, small groups, groups of people's livings, living rooms, or anything, all the way back to two years ago, they're all on an email list that gets sent out, and they could opt out of that if they didn't want to by contacting the Planning Services Office. But, so they get the agenda, and they get all the attachments with what's in the packet, so that they know what we're talking about at that night's meeting, at each meeting. And many people have come because of reading that and brought many suggestions to us, and participated very lively. So, it just happens that lately, since we, we haven't been doing that, there haven't been as many people here.
And they can also go to the website.
Yeah.
Even if they're not on the email list, they can get.
Yeah. And if they don't want to come, they can send feedback to the office.
Okay. So, next item on our agenda is discussion of outreach for housing and economic development chapters. This was put on our agenda, kind of at my urging, when, at that meeting, the sustainability meeting.
Yeah.
I ran into a few people from the Bradwell Housing Authority, and they asked about the possibility of, of talking with either the commission or people on the commission about some, you know, just about the, the town plan. And, you know, I was reminded about years ago, when we were going to start the town plan discussion, a few of us on the Planning Commission met with probably ten different people that are involved in housing from, from different committees, and Housing Authority, the Land Trust, a couple landlords, so various people involved in housing in town. And it was really interesting, and it seemed like a, a productive way to, sort of an interview process in some ways. And so, I just brought up to Sue that I would like to talk about how we would do outreach for, for those two chapters. We have done some of that already with economic development, but the question would be how to, how to do it for those two chapters going forward. So, one, one thought was to take a, an outline of the housing chapter, an outline of the economic development chapter, and send them out to organizations who are involved with those topics, and get their comments. Similar to what we did with the education chapter, we really got a lot of comments.
Yeah.
And, and that would be a way to get people excited, maybe, if that's the right word. But, and, and, and see what sort of comments we get, and then also see if that suggests that in some cases, people would want to sit down with, with the commission, or with members of the commission for, you know. You know, whatever way we could do it practically, so. So, that's a suggestion.
Yeah, and I should point out that neither of the things that are in front of you now, I mean, these are really very basic, like almost placeholders on our server for these two chapters. They're acting more like kind of dumping ground documents rather than even a reasonable outline. So, I don't want you to think that this is what we would send out to interested individuals or bodies right now. It would be somewhat more sophisticated than this.
Yeah.
But this is, this is, particularly the housing one.
There's really nothing there, except for trends.
Well, I wanted, I wanted, I wanted to just, that was really me just totaling up things this afternoon to, to put it in front of you to get some, even an initial reaction. So, and to, to help you get a slightly better sense of what we think that issues or concerns might be around the housing chapter.
Gary, let me ask. Did we decide that each chapter would kind of go over the census information that we gleaned that said, you know, there's a certain amount of poverty, and there's a certain amount of.
Yes.
Lack of growth, like in each chapter, so that kind of lays the groundwork?
These two chapters would feature kind of outtakes, I think, from that information pretty heavily as part of the introduction in each.
Probably these two as much as any chapters, you know.
Yeah, because I think that's where the goals were derived.
Right. There's some of that information in the education chapter as well, and you would begin to see some of the, like. I think it's important for us to actually think about both of these chapters with connection to land use as well. The, the challenge being, you know, the assumption with planning is normally that you're engaging in planning for orderly growth and development. Bradwell is a slightly more challenging task, which is planning in the absence of obvious levels of growth and development. And so, that, that presents challenges to. And so that, that presents challenges too.
Is there a resource that, that, that would show what it is now as far as, you know, what are the, the family types? What's the ratio of rental housing to low income housing?
Yes. We have, Brattleboro has around about fifty, just over 52% of its housing is surface rental. And a large proportion of that is low income slash affordable relative to state and region, you know, New England regional numbers. When you place Brattleboro in the regional housing market, because people don't necessarily shop for housing explicitly inside, you know, one municipal boundary, you look for a home, you know, even if you were working or going to school in Brattleboro, you may look for a home in, you know, seven or eight different communities, including New Hampshire as well as here. So when you go further out and look at the primary market area for Brattleboro, which is a little too large to some extent, but is representative, so that includes Inzale and Chesterfield in New Hampshire, it even includes Bernstein in, in Massachusetts and most at Wyndham County. Then straight away, the balance between homeownership and rental goes back to the national average. So it's about 72% homeownership and, you know, 30-odd percent or 20-odd percent rental. So what I'm trying to convey here is that, just like a whole lot of other things, the confluence of various factors included in geography and history and the built form means that Brattleboro is the residential district for the county that has a higher proportion of rental properties than, than other parts. So if we're in a large metropolitan area, it would equate with those neighborhoods immediately around a train station or something similar, where you'd have higher levels, you know, higher levels of density, more likely to have lower income, housing provided and so forth. And so particularly when it comes to jobs and other aspects of economic development and housing, it's better to think of Brattleboro situated in a bigger market because that better explains people's decision making and, and activities.
So would you see, how, how much, how many factoids would you see putting in these chapters? You know, how many?
Well, I, I think they're both going to be fairly heavily fact-laid and I think the important things to convey about housing include the questions that Timberly just asked, but I would augment that with debt on household size. So another attribute that's unusual and, you know, against the national average and probably add-ons with some people's sense of Brattleboro is that it has a growing number of single person households, or very small households, and that they're also aging or aged. And so the, it's consistent, you know, so when you look at the community profile of who's actually living here and then start thinking about it in the context of housing, it gives you a more nuanced understanding of where the demand for certain types of housing is coming from and how best to respond to it. So both Wyndham Housing Trust and Brattleboro Housing Authority consist to keep extensive waiting lists and maintain significant data sets. Both those organizations are aware that there's strong demand for one bedroom or studio type apartments and that a large number of their residents and or applicants for their programs are people with functional, physical disabilities as well.
So, but, but sort of looking at things in a little more general terms on both of these chapters.
Yeah, okay.
How, you know, if, if these were going to go out to different organizations that are concerned with these topics and that would have comments and, and a vested interest, how much of that information do you think would go in, in these before they go out? And how, how far past first draft status do you think these would be? Just enough to elicit some response or?
I would hope to actually have a Philly data rich going out. And I think that the kind of feedback I would like to see coming back from people in the field, private landlords as well as, you know, others, is the relevance of the data that's included and if it worked, how effective it is at illustrating or, you know, drawing the, the picture of the economic development, I would feel the same. I think the challenge there is, for instance, on the surface, it looks like we have fairly low unemployment, which could be viewed as a good thing, but it may, you know, a more, a more depth look might conclude that that's because people have already left the community in, in search of work and so forth. So there's, you know, for, for both chapters, I actually think it's important to give out quite a bit of data and have the people comment on the relevance of that data in, in drawing the picture.
Okay. So what about this approach to these chapters and getting input from, from the community organizations and what do, what do you folks think about that approach?
Well, certainly consistent with what's done in other chapters. And I think it's really important to have a separate data in there because we're at least it'll show like the population's aging and, and that when we're looking at land use, we could think about that same aging population. I believe that they've identified, at least the Halt Report, places like on Putney Road to have new residential areas and they could include senior housing and so forth.
Would it be valid to put something in there that not just talks about where we are now, but, you know, where we want to be, where the, you know, where, where are the jobs going to be in, in five years from now? Where are we trying to attract? You know, if, if jobs is the reason that people are leaving or that the population is where it's at, then, I don't know, it ju, it just seems sort of, you can talk to a fool in the face, but if we're not coming up with solutions to the problems or, you know what I mean?
So that would be, you know, the, what Liz is talking about, what we can talk about would be at the beginning and then we could have goals and policies and actions and draft, in draft form, that, that goes out. That's part of the chapter, you know?
I see Tim was a comment to be more of an economic development?
Well, I don't know. I mean, it just, it, there's, I don't know, for example, the cost of, of fuel, weatherizing these old houses. How many old houses do we have in Brattleboro? How many of them need to be weatherized? How does efficiency Vermont play a role? What should they play a role in? Should they have a bigger role? What are the tax incentives like now? Like, what are they like now? What are they, you know, what are other states doing that are, that's showing a positive, that's making a more progressive measure towards, you know, I, I, those are just random examples, but it just, it.
Yeah. I hear what you're saying. I think there's a couple of challenges in trying to convey that kind of stuff and also what the scope of the town is in terms of like setting policies and implementing policies. But I think we can do some of that.
But those are things that are in the energy chapter, for instance. I mean, you're at a disadvantage because you haven't been here for discussion about all these chapters, you know, but that is the kind of stuff, you know, what we're, what we're trying to do is come up with what, what the goals are for. The vision is the long term, you know, 20 years. The goals though are really five year goals. And so we're really trying to.
Who's going to look at this besides the DRV and somebody sitting, you know, at a meeting? I mean, what's?
That is the whatever thousand dollar question. We're trying to make it so enticing that everybody will want to copy.
Well, then we need to put some pictures in here. We need to put some charts and diagrams. All this text.
So Timberly, what you're saying though is if we're sending it out to people to comment on, are we creating an accurate picture? You think it would be beneficial to get their feedback on how we're actually planning to move it forward?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, and just, it doesn't have to be how we're planning to move it forward. It could just be a list of, of trends of what, what the job market is now and what, you know, Forbes or whoever is saying that, you know, multiple resources, I, I don't know, but something, something that would.
Right. We have that data. We have, I would, you know, I would say that, you know, this, the economic development chapter is complicated by a couple of things and they're not totally absent for housing either. One is that the data sets that we use, usually the, the lowest jurisdiction they go down to is county level. So there's a lot of noise introduced by what is always not happening in Stratton, for instance, in the Brattlebrows numbers, or Keene for that matter, depending on which data set you're looking at. So we are in the Keene labor market for certain kinds of labor, you know, for, for job statistics purposes. So it's actually quite difficult for a small community like this one to actually tease out what's really happening. That in and of itself is a major, is a major planning problem. So like a lot of other rural communities, we're kind of beset with that problem. We're too small, literally, we're too small to count. So it's a lot of tea leaf reading to some extent and anecdotal stuff and then trying to figure out what the trends and patterns are with the data that you do have. What I'd say is we're not that out of the ordinary, you know, given the size of the community and its location in terms of the things that we're confronting. The strategies or the solutions are, you know, there's a range to choose from. Again, the question would be, the town can frame it in those, you know, the town plan can frame it positively in those terms, but there's really pretty limited resources for the select board or other entities in town to actually make things happen. It's a predominantly private sector thing that we're trying to move here and that's going to be in response to the other big demographic things that come from the census. We're aging, we're shrinking our stable population. So it was straight away from a market growth, you know, from, from a retailing or a marketing standpoint, we're not exactly the same kind of target that say, you know, a faster growing community in another part of the country might be.
But it doesn't have to be like that, right? I mean, that's the idea.
No, it doesn't have to be, but again, these are very slow moving objects that take a really, you know, these are very slow moving trends to turn around. So absent, you know, some methods, these are breaking New York City, we're not likely to get a lot younger, very young.
But wouldn't, wouldn't something like this be a good tool to entice people to move here? I mean, if you're saying that this stuff is, one, it would be a good resource for people looking to move here or start a company, I mean, I would, I would think that they, no?
I think further down in the policy and action steps, you'd see things, I think the document should be written in a way that is accessible and somewhat enticing, even inspiring, to quote Ken Schneig. But more seriously, I think it needs to show a commitment of very limited resources in a handful of areas. So if we're going to focus on the creative economy as a growth, as a potential growth sector, then we need to come up with explicit policies that do that.
So, limited resources, so you're saying the town is not going to put a lot of money into this, but we're going to put a lot of money into this? That's, that's, that's just it?
I would say the general operating assumption is the town has no money. So, and anytime you have a discussion about reassigning resources, then you have to talk to the people who are about to give something up as well as to the people who would like something more. And that's, because I think that in terms of the funds that are under the direct control of the town, there is going to be no growth in revenue for the next five year period of any significance.
There's not going to be any growth in the population or jobs either then, right?
No, that's exactly, that's exactly, but it's, it's, these are not easy, these are not easy things to necessarily resolve.
So we're planning for a static.
Right.
Environment.
Right.
But I, I seem to remember that there were other meetings about economic development before the commission.
Yeah.
I know Build a Better Brattleboro came and presented, so maybe some of those elements could be in here. And also a bigger discussion about both arts and the creative economy.
Right.
So they can be added in here and reflect more of what we've discussed in the past.
Yep.
Yep. So things that we can do, things about, include working with state and federal agencies, including Amtrak to ensure that the quality of the Amtrak service to Brattleboro improves and increases and that that, the so-called Knowledge Corridor project, which mostly takes place in Western Massachusetts, gets completed. So there are actual real material things that we can do that are consistent with the things we've already discussed in the town, in the town plan process.
Does that include the Vermonter stopping in Brattleboro?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Which, so, so those are.
The one that comes early in the morning.
Yes. You don't like that, no?
No, I do, but it, it stops in White River Junction and then it stops in Springfield.
Right. No.
Stops in Brattleboro.
Stops in Brattleboro.
I heard something that it might be running bus service, right?
They are.
Oh, yeah. They've got a section of the track.
It's shut.
Yes.
That's why the lights are working so wonderfully, right?
Yes.
The Vermont, but the other one, the express or whatever, it starts, it stops in White River Junction and stops in Springfield.
Oh, maybe.
Doesn't stop in Brattleboro.
Okay, that might be also true.
So, we have, for sure, talked about economic development in discussions from other, in other areas.
Right.
Education, transportation.
Right.
So, and that's one of the challenges, right? The plan is how to draw that stuff in, but, you know.
But I think that all of these chapters, housing and economic development, they lead ultimately to land use, land use. So ultimately, any actions that we would take, considering that it's a static environment and the town has no money, would be land use recommendations. I mean, that's really all that we have. So if there's a land use recommendation that's going to foster economic development, that's what we should be exploring.
Right. And I want to say, you know, to somewhat take the edge off the conclusion that it's static, if we hold our own, in other words, if Brattleboro's population loss doesn't actually get worse over the next five to 10 year cycle, I would actually regard, and notes is going to sound weird.
As an achievement.
I would regard that as a significant achievement. Because the context that you should put it in is other communities of this size in northern New Hampshire or upstate New York or Maine that are actually really losing.
Yeah.
Very significant proportions of their population and, you know, it is, there are stores, fun more stores shuttered and there's more derelict housing, there's issues with blight and, you know, some conditions and blight. And, you know, I want to say that Brattleboro actually has been remarkably fortunate in not having those kinds of challenges in a huge way. The economy has shifted and has, it has shifted here very significantly. It's continuing to evolve. There's lots of things that we can take advantage of that are huge assets to be more carefully developed. And I think that the purpose, what I would want to see to reinforce Liz's point, is that the land use chapter is really the underpinning of the planning of it here in terms of the five through 20 year timeframe. And chapters such as housing and economic development are complements to that. But I also feel like it's very important for us to be realistic about the nature of hardship in the community, how it manifests itself, how widespread it is, what the opportunities for people are, not just some people. And then also realistically, you know, the net flow of households or families in and out of Brattleboro in one year or any five year period, we're gonna, you know, it's, it's going to be a mixed bag and we need to acknowledge that and work with that as best we can. The town does have, because it's static and because we're not growing very fast, things such as tax revenue, property tax revenue is not growing. So the things, the, the, the kind of income that the town has total control over, tax income from property, is actually not growing. So, and the national political context and economic context is such that we don't envisage us being recipients of federal or state program funds in any significant way. Where we can be and where we can take advantage of those things, we should. So again, in the economic development chapter and in the housing chapter. development chapter and in the housing chapter, the use of new financing tools, like when you have the new market tax credits and the low income housing credits and so forth, are important tools that we've only really begun to explore. They are also, of course, on a list of things that the Republicans want to eliminate, but which has gone undiscussed as part of budget programs from the Republicans, that both those programs would be end actually. So I, I just want to say, you know, we need, those, these chapters will be fairly technical in nature, they'll have a lot of data, they won't necessarily be super inspiring, but they'll be the concrete policy and action steps needed in the plan as a whole to then guide the work of this commission and other parts of the town, and then also be, to be used in subsequent projects that are more focused, grant writing, the establishment of new organizations, the participation in existing organizations and so on.
So let me ask this question again. Does this approach seem valid to people? And do you have any comments or questions about it? Carolina?
Well, I'm not sure about the answer to your first question, but I, I would like to see something included in the economic development chapter that says that we're, can't do anything about it, but we're exploring new areas of job creation around newer technologies that are coming around. I mean, we're, in the future, there's going to be job creation for things that we haven't even thought of today around energy and food and agriculture distribution and whatnot. And I don't see any, there's a brief, there's brief sort of mentions to like looking at larger markets and blah, 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 to retain an investment in targeted industries. But I would like it to be a little bit more specific that we're really, that one of the goals or actions is to really explore what new areas of job, and I don't know who would do this per se, but maybe even forums in the community. And there's, I know when Michael Schuman came last fall, or in the spring, I'm sorry, to Putney, I mean, he talked about the whole agric, there's a whole, there's a whole sector of the agriculture and food industry that's like wide open in this area where we could create lots of jobs. And...
We import 60% of our food that we eat in an agricultural state.
Yep. So to look at all that and, and explore those things under, because the, was real clear from the scoping group, that economic development was a key. And I know it comes under land use and having the right zoning to encourage that. So I don't disagree that they go together the way you were suggesting, Rod, that they all fit together. But I really want us to have in there, and I think this is the kind of thing that, say, the post-oil people were really thinking about. They want it to be looking at the bigger picture and where we're really going. And so that as a town, we're inviting people to come and participate and explore these things. And we're looking at ways to be sure that Career Center gets supported. I know, like Greenfield Community College is now having all kinds of programs for energy certification, certification, and this, that, and the other thing. I just read through their catalog that just came in the mail.
I saw that, too.
Yeah, it's very exciting. And it's like, so what can we do in this community, in this county? And I think just some of those ideas need to be in the economic development chapter.
Okay.
Okay.
And that we can also, in doing that, some of those can be like what Majora Carter did. She was here at the Slow Living Summit, but around Strolling of the Heifers Day, but she took South Bronx, a very poor area of the city, a lot of toxic stuff happens there, all the city's trash went there. And she created, they created jobs to help those, training for those people right in that neighborhood to, and that's like jobs, economics, and social justice, and the environment, they kind of all go together. And, and I, I would like to see us do that, because we, we do have a lot of poverty in this area. Are there ways that we can entice people in the community to work with that? And kind of the way, I, I do know at Renew Salvage for a while, they were looking at hiring people from all different aspects so that they could be trained and that kind of stuff. So I would like us to have something in here that supports businesses doing that, supports whatever, that we're looking and exploring those things, how we as a community can leverage ourselves for the future. Because the future, even a couple of years from now, isn't going to look exactly like it does now, even if it's for whatever reason, price of oil, or what the Congress votes in budget wise and whatnot. We're going to have to accommodate for those things. And I think that needs to be here.
Okay.
That was a lot, but, sorry.
It was?
Well, I, I, I like Carolina's statements, and I think that there is a lot of opportunity for green jobs. The other thing I just wanted to say, I don't know if it's anecdotally or not, but it is an attractive town. You know, I'm one of many people I know who've moved here within the past five years. And, and I think there's a lot of attractive things to say about this town in particular.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, totally agree.
So with these, would it be fair to suggest that we have a further along draft of them for our next meeting?
Yeah.
And that we can look at as a group and comment on before they go out to organizations?
Right. Sure.
Is that...
That would be my expectation.
So reasonable?
Yeah.
And I even think from the, the last public meeting we had in that sustainability thing, there were ideas for housing there, too. I just went through and looked, and I pulled out, one, two, three, four, five, six of them, so.
Yeah. Okay. So, let's, let's proceed that way. At our next meeting, we'll, we'll take a look at, at drafts of these two chapters, and with the idea being that we will approve them to go out to organizations. And how many people are on the, the email list? Who do you, would you guess? I mean...
I can't guess tonight.
Yeah?
It's a long day. It's over...
Must be a couple hundred, huh?
Yeah, I want to say it's like three hundred or something.
Yeah, significant.
Okay. Okay.
Putney Road, are we ready?
The last thing here is the continued discussion on the Putney Road Plan. Again, this is the road, road plan, the Putney Road, road plan. And in our packet from July 11th, there was a copy of the scoping report. And our intent here is to talk about the Putney Road Plan and to examine it in light of the new reality, I guess, is what we're, something like that.
Actually, could I, could I frame your work a little, little tighter than that?
Sure. Well, sure.
Okay.
That wasn't very tight.
So if I could take you back to the last meeting, the purpose of looking at future land use as commissioners was to reflect on the trends and patterns that we observe now, what things we think are going to change in the foreseeable future. By that would mean most specifically from now, five years forward, but as far as 20 years. And then through consideration of future land use and reflect on the current zoning map and the current zoning districts as they're described, and see whether the description and range of the current zoning districts is appropriate for the community now and into the future. And so one of the things that we resolved the last meeting was that there are clearly some examples of somewhat isolated small zoning districts that had question marks about whether they were appropriate in the, to preserve into the future. Part of the consultant's work, Roger Hawke's work, working with us, the commission and staff, was to develop the report on all four commercial districts. By area, Putney Road is the largest commercial district. And so a great amount of work in his plan actually addresses Putney Road. And one of the things that we worked through at the last meeting was a dramatic simplification down from eight or nine zoning districts to three or four. And that as far as practical, those zoning districts should actually conform to zoning district language and zoning districts that are found in other parts of town. So instead of creating small Putney Road master plan or Putney Road area specific low density residential districts, use something like rural residential, which is a pre-existing zoning district that we have, that is consistent with low density residential use. And where we've got commercial or industrial or something similar to that, use those existing zoning districts as far as practical to describe land use in that, in that part of town. So in Roger's work, looking at each of the four commercial districts and the commercial activity for the town overall, a couple of conclusions, which again echo the kinds of remarks made by Liz and others tonight, are that the downtown is strong and vibrant and is holding its own and to some extent growing, and that this is actually something to celebrate and very important, and very important to nurture. For the most part, the Canal Street exit one area is pretty stable. There are some opportunities for growth that we think are somewhat afforded by the physical layout of some of the commercial area and its general appearance. And we think that Route Nine in West Brattleboro is pretty stable, and we don't expect to experience too much growth there. So then the last district to consider is, is in fact Putney Road. The Putney Road master plan had a 50-year time horizon and fairly ambitious targets for population growth, for residential activity, as well as employment and business activity. As far as we can judge, and as far as Roger and his team can judge, we think that progress towards those ambitious goals is not evident so far. And given that and the amount of time that's elapsed, and given the change in context for retail activity and other forms of commercial activity in the New England region and the nation as a whole, they'll given the task of reviewing the zoning districts that have been developed along Putney Road so far, and whether they're appropriate, and what would be realistic expectations in the five, 20, and then 50 year time horizons. The conclusions that were reached were that they think that much of the auto-oriented large scale retail development that you find on Putney Road is likely to survive for some time. So that would be in particular the Royal Plaza development and the Hanniford Plaza development. And to some extent, the hardware store and plaza over the road from Hanniford, that, that they're all likely to remain as useful buildings, you know, with useful retail activity based in those buildings for some time to come, upwards of 20 years. So then the question that needs to be addressed is, how valid is the master plan when it comes to the more intense development of that middle section? By that we mean the area bounded by Chickering Drive on the western side and taking in the area to the east of Putney Road, roughly over the road, so where the current bus depot and bowling alleys and so forth. And there's some vacant land there as well heading south. And the expectation is that there's little impetus for change there, but that, that presents some opportunities. So what we've done is we've worked through, for the most part, we've worked through the land use concerns. What do we think are viable zoning districts out there? How do we think they should be framed? What kind of policy adjustments can we make to make that region, that commercial district, more vibrant? Some of the recommendations include relaxing or removing the restrictions on 65,000 square foot or above buildings for the middle section, for instance. There's a recognition, both in Roger's report and in other places, that the notion that the, the town would be the entity that would fund the creation of side road networks along Putney Road is regarded as unrealistic. And so that means that the major impetus for creating a denser fabric of settlement along Putney Road falls to the market to pursue for itself, with the possibility that the town could later take up those roads. Again, when you go back to the question of whether the private sector is showing interest in that, there is none. And so we've fleshed out these issues fairly carefully and at length. What this leaves us with then is the underlying assumptions behind the concept plan for Putney Road itself. So integral to the Putney Road master plan development was a dialogue between the Putney Road Planning Committee and the Planning Commission, and representatives of the trans and, and other consultants and experts. And so somewhat hand in hand, the master plan and the road plan developed together, as far as I can gather. They weren't exactly on the same calendar, but they were happening at the same time.
They influenced each other.
Um, yeah, that's probably fair to say. And so what we now have is a recommendation from the Planning Commission contained in the Putney Road master plan, that alternative three of the consultant's study on the road plan should be the one that's, that pursued. We have a resolution, we have a resolution from the Select Board to the same effect. And we have an acknowledgement in the report that we distributed in the packet from July the 11th, that, that lists all this information out. So the question now becomes, alternative three is based on the, to some extent, on the optimistic or ambitious goals set in the master plan. And if they no longer hold or, if they no longer appear to be on schedule or on target, what does this do for a consideration of the road plan itself, separate from the master plan, which we've discussed at length? So tonight, what we're trying to do is to resolve how to move forward on the question of the actual road design.
Well, we don't actually have to decide that.
No, you don't have to decide it. You have to decide, how, you know, we need to discuss it.
Yes.
And it's not a writing a decision as to whether you want it or not, but more, okay, so you've done the work around the land use, which, you know, it's the land that lies on either side of the road. There's a very serious commitment to a large scale road project. What does our reconsideration of the land use do for the commitment to the large scale road project?
Can't we just say in the plan that we want to relook at the three road options, even though they recommended, if I'm remembering correctly, going with option three, can't we just say that we want to relook at that before the state makes a decision? That, that something about that can just be in the, in the plan? Or do we have to have, I mean, is that what you're asking us to do, to relook at that?
Uh, yeah.
Sounds like it. We got to that place, it sounds, I think, at the end of the last meeting.
Well, I, yeah, I think, Gary, at the end of the last meeting, we were talking about, that at this meeting, we would decide whether or not we thought that there should be more correlation in that.
I think what we're, you know, in a sense, what, what we're trying to do is disconnect the road plan from the, from the land use plan in a way, I mean...
Disconnect them?
Well, the current road, I guess the question is, if the current road plan is needed, if tho, if those improvements are needed, given the report that we're going to be asked to accept about the commercial areas. And, you know, if the, we talked last meeting about taking the, the altering... And, you know, if the, we talked last meeting about taking the altering the Putney Road plan to center the dense part of it, you know, to the south. And, you know, the few changes in the three different zoning areas. So, given that and what we might anticipate the land use would be and the use, is the road plan appropriate to that? That's the question, I guess.
Any plan that's done, like, at the end of a decade, suffers from the fact that you don't have the new census data. And so, now that we have it, and we, and you take with that the fact that, you know, the economy's, to the extent that it has, I think those two things in conjunction kind of lead to help us making decision-making on both points, with the planning and the roadway, because they're not as optimistic in terms of growth as we were a couple of years ago. So, I think that that's the type of thing that calls for a revision, kind of downward in terms of scale. But I also think, remember we had that Putney Road meeting? And, for lack of remembering who he was, the rude man.
I'm sure he'll respond well.
Yeah. You're not watching on television.
You want to look at the camera and say, "You know who you are."
You know who you are. He had, you know, two suggestions, and I think they were good. One was, you know, to eliminate that market assessment for the 65,000 square feet that Roger's mentioned. And the other one was that the roundabouts were bad for business, because people couldn't turn directly into a business. And, you know, I think that we should really take that into consideration as a comment from businessman along Putney Road that adds a validity to it. So, if you take both of those things in conjunction, the fact that, you know, the census calls for a downshift and the roundabouts are bad for business, I think that should add to our discussion.
Why did the roundabouts, why did he say they were bad for business? Because you can't turn directly into a...
There's going to be a median and then a roundabout.
Oh, okay.
The core of the road plan is proposed. Alternative three calls for a, the north, to get techie about it, that the north and southbound lanes will be limited access, you know, like separated, so that whichever direction you're driving in, you won't be in conflict with vehicles that turn to turn left across traffic.
Yeah, makes sense.
The purpose there being...
Right in, right out.
Right.
This is probably something you're familiar with from New Jersey, that I remember from my time there. Right, Liz?
I don't think you want New Jersey on Putney Road.
No, well, I don't mean that, but there's... I would never suggest that. But they do this a lot down there with the right turns for the U-turn lanes and...
It's jug handles.
Jug handles.
The jug handle concept.
That's right.
And I think that people actually driving around with jugs of moonshine would be safer than the jug handles.
Ooh.
You want to look at the camera?
Is that your recommendation?
Well, this is not a jug handle concept, I'm just saying.
Concept.
It is kind of a pain, though.
Well, and I think that the reason for the circles also was that there was going to be a lot more development on those side roads, that people would be...
Well, think of where those would be, though. You know, one would be on Black Mountain Road, so...
It's a horrible intersection now.
Pardon?
That's a horrible intersection now. Needs to be improved in some way.
Trying to take a left in, out, anywhere on that intersection is really difficult. And the light is, I mean, when you look at the purpose and need statement that the whole thing was based on, hardly anything is invalid from then. And so that was the, you know, I'm not going to say that we have more money in the state and, you know, feds, you know, that we have enough to pay for the project. And that's, I mean, that's a big, a big deal, of course, but that, alternative three was not arrived at lightly, you know.
Oh, I'm sure.
It was, you know, and the fact that the four roundabouts was to create a pretty short distance between, you know, I want to go over there, I just have to go down there to go there, you know. And in the end, I mean, there was a lot and lot of business and residential participation, not just from Putney Road, but from all over town. And it was a concept that people were used to from the roundabout that we have. And, you know, people complain about it, but in terms of injuries, waiting time, amount of greenhouse gases saved and so forth, that compared to the intersection that used to be there, it's a huge improvement, you know. And, I mean, I, you know, I don't know if we should change our opinion of this plan or not, but it wasn't like, there's real reasons for all these, for all the features of this, you know. I mean, I have a business on Putney Road. Taking a left out of there wouldn't, it wouldn't change. Taking a left in or a left out is really, really difficult. You know, sometimes it's, it takes, I mean, it's not New Jersey proportions, but sometimes it takes a long time by our standards, you know. And that, to me, is as big an impediment for businesses as the medians and roundabouts would be. You know, to me, they would be a great thing. One of the features of it is that it's traffic calming, so people don't go flying through, and they're not also worried about, when am I going to hit that light? You know, they have more time to look around and see what's around, you know. I mean, it's a, you know, I was totally convinced that it was a great design, you know. And I think also, the people along the way, at first were grudgingly convinced, well, grudgingly, they weren't convinced. But as we talked about it and people looked at it and talked about what would actually happen, you know, I think, I don't think there were many people in the room at all those meetings that didn't like the alternative, even the rude guy.
Well, I think, you know, I think four roundabouts in a row is a lot. I mean...
It's a lot in present-day terms, you know, but it's, you know, when you look at the numbers of how many people go through and how many people stop along the way, that's another thing to consider. I mean, I think 60% of the people that come from exit three come towards Brattleboro would be out of the system by the second roundabout, you know, something like that, I think was the number now.
Could it?
Okay, how is that possible?
They go back.
Because they go places.
Oh, oh.
They, they, so there's a large percentage of...
I misunderstood what you were saying.
You okay with it? Okay. So, if I could just draw people's attention to page 14 of the Van Ness Hagan Brussels Report, where they work through, this was included in your packets, okay? So it's under the subheading Traffic, but it's on page 14. And they talk about how they actually arrived at the figures that they arrived at. And there's just a couple of things that I think are important to point out. One is that, the first and perhaps the most important thing is that even in this report, they identified the two limiting factors being the existing two-lane roundabout to the north at the intersection of Route Nine and Route Five, you know, the existing roundabout that we have. So they're not proposing any increase in size or capacity for that structure. And the other structure that they're not proposing any increase in is the actual bridge over the West River. So we're really talking about whatever traffic, whatever traffic you find on Putney Road between those two choke points or neck downs is going to be the traffic that is dealt with. So, I want to emphasize that point. This is a large-scale road project that entails significant commitment of resources, but it's for just on a mile, I think, and both to the north and the south, there's a key feature to the road itself that limits overall the level of service that you, which is the time it takes to travel, that you'd experience on that road. They do use the Putney Road master plan to establish forecasts for traffic volumes. And they use the assumptions built into the master plan, which include 1,780,000 square feet of low-density commercial space and 2 million square feet of mixed-use center with 1,000 residential dwelling units. Now, I want to put that in context with the conversation that we've been having so far, and if, it's a bit early for you to review this, but that material turns up in the Putney Road master plan, it also turns up for discussion in Roger's plan, where he compares Putney Road as it currently exists with the proposed plan and the downtown. So, Putney Road currently, as the master plan area is currently defined, it's 250 acres in area, and the downtown is 60 acres. The amount of commercial and industrial building area currently in the Putney Road area is 1,385,000 square feet. The plan, the Putney Road master plan, calls for that increasing to 3,780,000 square feet. Currently in the downtown, it's set at 1,006,000 square feet. In the Putney Road existing area, there's 115,000 square feet of residential use, and that's proposed in the Putney Road master plan to grow to plus or minus 1 million square feet. In the downtown...
Exit 35 and Roger Hucks.
Yep. In the downtown, it's at 188,979 square feet. Total building area for the Putney Road in existence now is 1,500,000 square feet. The plan, the Putney Road master plan, calls for that increasing to 4,780,000 square feet. The downtown is currently 1,240,000 square feet. So, the last point being building density, you would have, according to the master plan, a building density very close to the building density of the existing downtown, is what the Putney Road master plan calls for. So those are the kinds of numbers that have been used to forecast the traffic numbers in the Putney Road master plan.
But, that's not what they, that's not what they relied on, though.
They do go on to say, actually, something very important, which is that when you actually look at a more, this is the bottom of page 14, a more realistic traffic volume forecast. The Brattleboro station estimated a negative 20-year growth factor in comparison to the 0.5% annual growth rate for the urban highway group average. I would like to adjust that even further. The state's predictions for the urban highway group average are actually now forecasted decline 2%, and the indications for Wyndham County as a whole are even a bigger decline than that. So what I'm, what I'd like to say is that the actual real numbers that they use for the Putney Road concept plan, the consultants here, the Van Ness Hagan Brussels Report, VHB, you know, when they analyze the actual numbers, they're identifying a reduction in traffic numbers. But they're saying further out, beyond 15 years from that point, 2006, I guess, when this was written, that they expected some growth on the basis of the master plan really coming into effect. What we're now saying is that we're clear that the master plan is not going to have anything like that effect, and arguably, we wouldn't be certain that we'd necessarily want it if it came at the cost of the downtown. Number two, the indications from the state itself now are that the decline in vehicle miles traveled is more significant than this report actually identifies, because it's old. So the latest projections are for a statewide reduction in the area of 2%, and that's actually more severe in the southeast corner, which from an environmental standpoint is actually a good thing, but from an economic development thing, maybe not so much. And certainly, from a, from the point of view of justifying an extremely expensive and large-scale road project makes it more difficult to justify, is what I would conclude.
So, based on all that, what does that relate to the plan that proposals, the alternatives proposes for Putney Road? What are you trying to say there? I'm, I, what's, is there a point you're trying to make? Because I'm a little lost, and you need help.
Which alternative?
Yeah. Are you trying, are you...
I'm saying, I'm saying that the projections used by the consultants no longer are valid.
Yeah.
Either their own data or the data that they, or the data that they've made use of from the Putney Road master plan. And so, the projections are lower.
I don't recall that they were relying on the master plan. I don't recall that there was a lot, a lot of the road plan was dependent on a lot of traffic growth. In fact, the sentence here says, "As such, significant traffic growth on Putney Road that would normally be predicted with level of development is not expected, planned for or desired. Additionally, the Brattleboro Regional Growth Center study was reviewed and projects little to no population change for the city of Brattleboro between 2000 and 2015." I mean, my recollection of all this is that it was mainly to address the level of service at the intersections. And, you know, granted...
What kind of service you mean?
That means how long it takes to get through.
Takes to get from one point to the right.
Accidents, you know, and they looked at the major intersections where the lights are now.
And it's dictated in large part by the speed limit. So, if you set the speed limit for 40 miles an hour, and then you find that the average speed is 15 miles an hour, then that's worse than if you set the speed limit at 30 miles an hour and the average speed was 15 miles an hour, right? Because it's the gap between the posted speed and the actual speed that determines the level of service. So one of the things that's somewhat odd for the context of the road is that it's posted at 40 miles an hour, because it's a state highway, and it might be more appropriate to post it at a lower speed, more consistent with the actual speed that the cars are actually traveling at on the road. That would been, ironically, what that does is that improves your level of service, because it's the gap between the posted limit and the actual speed that is measured. So, Gary, I understand what you're saying. I read that paragraph several times over the weekend recently. What they're talking about there when it's "as such significant traffic growth on Putney Road that would normally be predicted with this level of development is not expected" refers to the immediate, the sentence immediately previous, which is, they're talking about the creation of loop roads and connections between development parcels that would reduce the use of Putney Road, because they're thinking that there's going to be traffic that's moving around on the back streets of Putney Road.
Right.
And that it's going to be of mixed-use nature, far more like a walkable community. But, which is fine in theory, and I think is an important thing to hold on to. But I think that the review that we've been doing of the master plan so far and the general trends that we observe are such that we don't, we don't envisage that coming about in the next, you know, 10 to 15-year time period, which is the planning period for the road. And so while it might be important for us to think through how we want to present this to the Select Board, you know, separately and as part of the town plan, is preserving the ability to create side streets, both to the west and the east of Putney Road might be important. But I don't think, I don't think it would be easy to justify the kind of build-out that the master plan assumes is going to happen.
But some of the things that we have talked about that are possibilities on Putney Road, like senior housing, maybe, you know, like light industrial in places are either truck-intensive, you know, not, I mean, not big-name truck-intensive, but they are, employee parking to some extent, you know, housing and senior housing, you know, housing in You know, housing and senior housing, you know, housing in general and senior housing, which I think has, has always been one of the big goals of, of Putney Road redevelopment is to out on the, on the margins, you might say, to have housing. I mean, it just, it seems to me that's where the back road development is gonna come from, not, not necessarily that there's gonna be a bunch of retail stores back there.
Right.
I don't think that's the idea.
No.
And I, it seems to me we're, we're talking about those kinds of development in Roger's analysis, you know? Not, not farm fields.
No.
Gary, when you were discussing Putney Road and, and the roundabouts, how was it proposed that people cross the street on a roundabout?
That's a, a good question. We talked about it quite a bit because that was a big concern that people had. And they didn't have a simulator that showed pedestrians, you know?
Well...
And so, that, you know, that's something that we talked about, about bringing the, the crosswalks back away from the roundabouts. And one of the valuable things about the roundabouts is that there's an island there, you know, a, an oasis, I guess they call it, for, for people to...
I think it's called a pedestrian refuge.
Refuge, thank you, yeah. And so...
Do you actually walk on the island? Well...
On the median place.
The median, in the middle of Putney Road.
A stopping place, you know?
Right. Someone, something to protect you from the traffic.
Because it's not, you know, roundabouts in this country at least, I have not been around that long, and so, the whole pedestrian use of roundabouts is, you know...
Well, you know, I usually talk about New Jersey. But, when we're talking about roundabouts, let me just say, I spent some time in college in Rome, and there's tons of roundabouts in Rome.
Rome, Italy?
Rome, Italy. And you can't cross the street. The only way you can cross the street in Rome is if you're a priest or a pretty girl.
Oh, you would be that?
You know, if our goal is to have a walkable community, and, you know, at that Putney Road meeting, you know, the woman who had the two kids over the street, she was trying to go to Hannaford, and it's hard enough as it is, I can't, I just, you can't cross the street on a roundabout. And I've seen that, and, you know, nobody, I, I don't, I've never, ever seen anyone walking up on the roundabout that exists now.
And totally, I have been paying much more attention to it recently, and it's, it's not a, it's not a good scene, is what I'd say.
It's really worth your life.
Right.
They, they do it, though. I've seen people...
They do it. I've stopped.
People, so, people who stay in hotels sometimes will think, "Oh, I can walk somewhere for dinner."
Right.
On their way back, they probably take a cab, but...
They're heading out, they're pretty brave.
Heading out, they're pretty brave, and they go, "Look, there's some down, things down there," you know? Or vice versa, from the other side going up to Stakeout or something like that.
Right.
Yeah, it is really, I mean, watching, if you were to watch it in a hidden camera or something, there's, there are really some Frogger-esque episodes that just look like a video game.
What, what kind of callouts do they have for the pedestrians now? I mean, is there actually some kind of paint...
Just a painted line, just a painted line that's quite faded.
Yeah.
And there's indents in the curbing, and that's it.
Right.
You just have to, like, look, like, almost like what she described in Italy and go...
But the issue is that they're, they're really close to the...
To the circle.
To the circle. So, you're either braking and looking around, or you're...
Or throttling.
Or you're gunning it because you just cleared and you wanna get out of there 'cause that person behind you is really close. And so, then all of a sudden, you're confronted with this person stepping off the curb.
You're not even gonna hear it as they bounce over the roof.
Yeah, just for the windshield wipers on. So, I wanna say it's less than a car length from the lanes around the roundabout, which means that if you stop for a pedestrian, then you have to hope that all the cars behind you are gonna play nice and stop also.
Yeah. It's taking your life in your hands either way.
If they're slow as pedestrians, like, if they got a stroller or something, which is fine, then actually, it takes five seconds for the whole roundabout to block all the way around to, to where you are, because that's the amount of flow that you're, that you're, that you're really grabbing up, so...
So, what's the question, moving it back or keeping it there?
Well, my experience with, what I, what I would say is, the reintegration with roundabouts strikes me as being pretty problematic from a road safety standpoint. I just don't think they should be part of the roundabout.
So, right now, we have one roundabout, and we're talking about adding more roundabouts in that stretch where, realistically, right now, you could walk. And if you added Roger Hawkes' recommendations for sidewalks and landscape and so forth, then you really, you could walk. You could walk that stretch from the West River up to the roundabout.
Right.
But if we chose to sign off again on the round, then more roundabouts, then you won't have a walkable stretch of land.
Remember now, the Alternative Three is more than just roundabouts. It's, it is bike lanes and pedestrian...
Complete streets, I guess.
Yeah. Well, no, it's not. It's pre-complete streets is what I'd, I would, yeah, yes, older than that.
Right.
You know, now, they, they may have been being optimistic about being able to figure out a way to make it work for crossing from one side to the other. And I think that generally in our discussions back then about the desirability of, like, our first discussion that I can remember, talking about nodes every quarter-mile that would encompass both sides of the road. And I think pretty early on, we said, "Meh, that's not right." You know? It is a, it's a divided road, you know? I mean, because of the nature of the beast, you know? And, I mean, that was just, you know, I think there should be a way for people to get from one side to the other, but...
Well, I think, yeah, okay.
I wanted to throw, I mean, it sounds like from what you said, and you correct this if I'm wrong, is that the impetus for this was to improve level of service. There's been the whole shift in transportation planning thinking, which hopefully, Vtrans is going to be, you know, reconsidering, but the complete streets. So, it seems like, yeah, we wanna make sure that pedestrians can cross safely, wasn't, maybe an afterthought is a strong word, too strong a word, but if first, we wanna get the cars moving through there, maybe it's something that they need to bump up in priority of, it's not just a matter of getting the cars through, we want...
But it was the number-one priority in this plan, pedestrian and bike.
Yes.
It was number-one, it was a level of service?
Yes.
Yeah, it was, it was what everybody came to meetings to talk about, you know?
Well, I, 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 yeah, maybe tingly answer.
Well, if the, to me, on that street as it is right now, I don't care who you are, nobody wants to walk on that street. You don't do it unless you have to, you don't go for a walk. And the only way to encourage people to walk would be to do some kind of improvement, trees or, you know, even a centered lane. So, and even that would encourage, having, having it, having the streetscape look like it was manicured or just more pedestrian-friendly would encourage development when the money eventually comes, whenever it does.
Right.
But it, it would, it would make it more desirable, it'd make density much easier and enticing for people. I mean, I think that's, that's where the...
And that's, I mean, that's in that plan.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, yeah.
I think it's a...
I'm not saying it's a perfect plan, really, but a lot of that is in there.
No, but I mean, if, what are we comparing to? Are we comparing Alternative Three...
To nothing.
To...
To no build or something else.
To no build. Or are we comparing it to Roger Hawkes' of landscaping pedestrian modifications, which, you know, throughout his report at Canal Street and the Putney Road, everybody looked at and thought it was great? So, it must be a hell of a cheat.
If you took Alternative Three...
Mm-hmm. And you compared it to...
And took out the roundabouts.
And you took out the...
That's Roger's plan.
The roundabouts and the median.
Well, yeah, because that was the same, you know, that's, that's what Roger...
Right.
I mean, the games that work and develops are okay.
That's all what it's about.
Right. Because I don't think you can cross the street, you know? I wanna, I wanna walk. I wanna walk on the sidewalk, north as well as south. And you can't do that with the roundabouts. And I'd rather take the space that's being used for the median and put it on the side to have, you know, a bike route and a sidewalk and a landscaped area.
Well, you can walk north to south. I mean, the, the brunt of the, the traffic is going north-south. It's not necessarily using side streets that much, right?
Oh, you can't walk now.
There's sections of the...
There's no sidewalks in the section.
There's sections of the eastern side that are pretty challenging. It's not clear whether it's, um...
But if there were a roundabout...
So, yeah, I mean, I think, just to clear up a couple of things, the, the roundabout, the Alternative Three does call for bike lanes, significant landscaping on the edge as well as the middle and the median strip, and does call for sidewalks. So, it's, though, all those elements are there. And I think that what Roger's doing by paying, by focusing, you know, first of all, he's responding to, to the comments that people made in those public meetings, which was, "Do something now about the streetscape, it's not really workable." But I, I think Roger didn't come as a traffic engineer, he came as a, as a commercial land use consultant, and I think it's important to, to remember that.
He also didn't study the Putney Road plan either.
Right. And so, so, well, just, you know, be, be fair to the, you know, what is, what are the kinds of things that we're comparing here? I mean, I, I think that the report, the work that, that was done by Rogers, Roger and the meetings that were held, and the other meetings that we've held, right throughout the town plan process, if there's one unifying theme from the get-go with practically every meeting that we've been at, regardless of the intended topic, is that people have spoken very earnestly and enthusiastically about the need for much better provision for bike and pedestrian use. And so, when I think about this plan, you know, the Putney Road Master Plan and the Putney Road Plan, my concern is, if the Putney Road Plan, the thing that we're reviewing tonight, is expensive and, in some ways, is still justified by the town using the, its own planning process to assume a build-out density as, as high as I talked about before, you know, nineteen thousand square, nineteen thousand square feet of building per acre for the Putney Road Master Plan area. I think in many ways, the, the road project is justified by the long-term view being, this is gonna be a very built-up area with this kind of density, and ultimately, in the end, the road will work and pay dividends because of that. We're now in this more serious kind of comparison question, where if we don't think that that number is A, true, or even B, desirable, because that does spell challenges for the downtown, given a relatively low level of population increase, then, then you're left with this question about, well, what about that big road project? And I, I think it's important to pres, it's important to sort of like, and Carolyn asked me this before, like, what do I want you to do? I think what I, it doesn't have to happen tonight, but I think the issues that need to be really teased out here are, you know, what are the things about the road project that are really important to hold on to? So, if it's bike and pedestrian access, both across the street and up and down, then those are the kinds of observations that we can make right now, or you can certainly make as part of the process, for land use and for questions specifically to the road plan going forward, and that should be contained in the plan. If it means that you're open to the reconsideration of Alternative Three or all three alternatives in light of the Complete Streets program, then that's also a perfectly appropriate recommendation, that, that, that as a body, the Planning Commission encourages the select board and Vtrans to reconsider this project in light of Complete Streets. Or you can say something else, which I...
The current economic climate.
Right. I mean, well, I...
The trends you've observed, and then, didn't you just say that there's...
I think it's fair to say, in the end, the dollars that are gonna be spent on this road project are high, you know, the, there's a lot of competition for those dollars. And so, at some point, where this road project is ranked on the list of projects that the state's gonna undertake, inevitably has to take into account political considerations as well as practical planning considerations. And if you can point to somewhere else in the state where there is growing traffic and traffic accidents and traffic access problems, and that's what needs the solution and it needs it now, then that's likely to rank higher than a very aesthetically appealing road project that's gonna bring real improvement to the quality of life for Brattleboro residents. But that, that's a pretty static number, and it's not gonna facilitate economic development in an obvious and direct way. So, you know, what I'm trying to do is be respectful of the process that's happened today, acknowledge the significance of the work, really underscore how important that work has been, getting people to focus on it. But now, it's an opportunity to be realistic about the likelihood of that implementation, how far out would that implementation be, given the scope of, you know, the scale of this project, and whether that makes sense in the context of what we actually see going on. Because if it's, that last part has changed, then you're obligated, as tax-paying citizens, to be, you know...
Reassessing it.
Reassessing it, right.
I, I don't think it's a good idea to spend nineteen million dollars on three roundabouts. And I feel bad saying it because I know Gary does, and I think Gary's right on about ninety-nine percent of things here, but one, one issue with the roundabouts, like Liz said, is while it may improve service time, and I agree with Gary that the current roundabout has improved all the statistical measures of that intersection, stop time's shorter, carbon is probably less. I still hate going through that roundabout because probably one out of every three times, there's a moron in it who doesn't use it the right way, which, you know, it's just a defensive driving area, and I think everyone would agree with that. And it's been there for ten years, and people still don't have it right, and it's better now than it was. But I would hate to do that three or four times every time I went up Putney Road, even if I, I mean, maybe not as a shopper, but it would just discourage me from going up there to get to exit three. And I'm sensitive to that making sense if it developed into a neighborhood. But frankly, I don't think that that's a realistic proposition, because when I look at the lot makeup on the map, all of the lots drop back from the road a long way. And this proposes, or this envisions the construction of what looks to me like twenty or thirty new buildings roadside. And it seems to me you'd have to find some way to organize a mass subdivision of a great majority of the lots on that road to reconfigure the neighborhood that way. And, I mean, that's, if you do it by eminent domain extraordinarily costly, or if you try to get a bunch of commercial owners to do it and put buildings in front of their own businesses, I think frankly, very difficult and something that couldn't be accomplished without incentive. And the other reason I don't like it is because I understand that it would be good if we could bring this to a neighborhood rather than this awful strip development we have now. But it was farmland at one time, and if there had been a desire to expand the neighborhood that way, it could have been done, but it wasn't. And an area where we have a second neighborhood center, West Brattleboro, there's been extremely little residential development, even though there is room for more. And the residential development on Putney Road is, I think, a trailer park and some affordable housing complexes, but very few housing areas that people have voluntarily moved to. It, it's mostly planned housing developments. And I wonder if the simple improvement of roads would give this the kick to really have a migration and expansion the way that this plan envisions it. So, I don't, I don't think it's the best place to spend nineteen million dollars because I think all of those limitations are really big hurdles to get over. And frankly, I think that the attractiveness of it right now is the ability to drive there easily to get the businesses. And even though statistical service time might be improved, I don't think it would be as easy to drive with the roundabouts. And that's the way I feel.
Just a comment. One of the things you have to remember is the roundabout at Exit Three really isn't built out to the right proportion it was without having to take extra land. So, it's, it's way smaller, and that's one of its real drawbacks as to why it's a pain in the butt, actually.
Agreed, agreed.
I think it just all makes it be relooked at.
Well, you know, the, the one thing about...
It's the most traffic problem.
To sort of think about the option of development in the future, and I, I definitely don't think that, that encouraging development as far as trying to counteract the downtown, I, I don't think anybody wants to see that. But one of the, the benefits of North Brattleboro is that it's sort of, the land is already tainted, you know? It's already, it's already been built on. Trees have been torn down. There's parking lots. And so, if, if there's anywhere to encourage development, it would be there rather than West Brattleboro where there's a lot of open green space still left. You know, I mean, I, I don't, I have no idea when the development's going to come or if it will come, but we, we should take into consideration that at some point, making it more desirable for development, for pedestrian access, and I, I think the roads sort of inform what's going to happen there and make it more desirable. I'm not saying nineteen million dollars is a good idea right now.
Well, I agree with you completely. I agree with you completely. And part of the, I mean, I think the eighteen-hour operation and the removal of a top limit on square footage would be good because, like you say, the horse is out of the barn, so we may as well give developers more freedom to utilize it.
We also don't have the shopping base here. We don't have the numbers based. When you big, when you build big box stores, you have to have a certain, there's a certain...
Marketing.
A marketing thing that they go. And that's why it's, I mean, it works in Kane because there's a bigger population base that it serves, and it really hasn't been that way here. It's why J.C. Penney, I mean, they built it, but J.C. Penney moved out, Home Depot came in, and they, they didn't make the marketing thing either. It's just, it's not an area that has enough population to, to serve them. And, and so, even if we take that sixty-five off, I don't think it's going to matter a whole lot.
To add, to add to this, we've been involved in some negotiations in the office with people thinking about some projects in Brattleboro. And this is consistent with other information that we've received. So, for a seventeen and a half thousand square foot store, you know, broad retail, kind of low-end, you know, I guess discount groceries is probably the best description. The expectation is that the market area needs to be two hundred thousand people within thirty miles before they'll even look at it as a site. So, you know, I want to put that, I mean, that's, that is a really serious number. There's nothing like two hundred thousand people within thirty miles of Brattleboro. And so, and that's for seventeen thousand square feet. To put that in context, that's like one and a half times the size of Walgreens. It's not a very, you know, it's not a very big store. It's nothing like the size of Hannaford's or Price Chopper. It's, um, you know, so, you know, what I'm trying to do is inject some reality into the development picture. And I think that this discussion's been very fruitful for me, and I hope for Sue too, that this has been useful to hear you sort of work through the issues. I, I don't, you know, I know that we're getting close to wind-up time here, so I don't know how you, how you want to go forward with this necessarily, but I think, I mean, I don't think anyone's expecting a, you know, a motion to ban all roundabouts from now, you know, for fifty years. You know, I think we can, we can work something out, but we need to figure out the steps now, um, given this kind of dialogue, I guess.
Well, I, I guess one thing, you know, when I think about the recommendations, you know, like one recommendation to have a travel services area basically between the roundabout and the light
Yep.
at Black Mountain Square. The last time that was proposed, and there was development proposed on that lot, it was rejected, and it was because of traffic considerations. And what, one of the things was what it would do to that, to the light at Black Mountain. You know, there would, there have to be another light there halfway by Dunkin' Donuts, for instance. And I...
Yeah, it was declared that was too close to the roundabout. It was going to be like seven hundred feet of the roundabout.
Yeah.
Right.
Right.
And so, I think, you know, just, that's just an example.
Right.
I mean, if, if we sit here and say, that's not a good solution, then what is a good solution for development? If, if, if what we think should happen is that land there should be, I mean, I'm not saying this should happen, but if we're, as a, as a commission, we think that that should have travel services and should be called that, then we have to provide for something at that intersection. And, you know, what is that? It has to happen different from what's there now. And there also, one of the proposals for that parcel was a back road.
Yes.
Yeah.
To feed onto Black Mountain Road.
Right.
To go where, you know? And the idea was to go to that roundabout.
Right. Well, I...
I'm just saying, I'm just saying, that's just one example of one spot, and, and some of the, of the, that's a problem.
Right.
Especially if it was trucks, I think that was...
Do we need, do we need to decide that we want to downsize the Putney Road Plan to be more consistent with a downsized land use plan for that area? And then, as a next step, see what a traffic engineer input would be on how to achieve those goals?
I would say in light of what? This study was three years ago, was when it was passed, you know, when it was finalized.
But we've just talked about all the various assumptions that are no longer valid or maybe determined to be no longer valid.
Have they changed that much?
Yeah, the traffic...
Other than the economic factor?
No, the vehicle, the, the AAD, the, the data that the state collects to develop forecasts for traffic volume have changed and are showing a strong and clear, not huge, but, you know, strong, clear downward trajectory, which is, like I said before, okay from one standpoint and not so much from another, but, yeah. And so, those numbers are not reflected in this report because they are newer. And then, the data that's specific to Wyndham County and to these roads in particular show a more significant decrease, initially associated by the recession, but the, now, the projections for this part of the state are also a little more conservative than they were. So, basically, you know, and they're not huge fluctuations. I mean, I'll, I'm not a traffic engineer either, so I don't want to say, look, if it's saying a two percent annual reduction, that's a really big deal. For all I know, five years from now, that'll reverse and start tracking in a positive direction. But I think it's of concern that the forecasting and projection numbers used in the consultant's report for the road design are, have changed. And along with that, our forecasting and expectations for what happens with the land use on Putney Road have also changed. And they're both consistent. They're both going in a, I think the word, the term that Liz used was a down.
So, that means you got to hire a bunch of people again, and, I mean...
Well, from what I know, the state, the, the process for the, for the next steps, the state is required to, you know, the current, this, this project, alternative number three, exists as a, as a, on a list maintained by V-Trans as a road project. What they need to do next is hold what they call a 502 meeting, which is a public outreach meeting, which engages the public in Brattleboro and appointed bodies like this one, as well as the Select Board, and would present or re-present this information and gather up some kind of formal response. And then, if that was positive and the disposition of the community was to restate the commitment made in the two thousand and eight Putney Road Master Plan or the two thousand and seven Putney Road Master Plan, and the, and restate the resolution of the Select Board from roughly the same time or the year before, and restate the findings in this report, then they would take that as all positive things to move forward with. We're involved in the town plan project right now, and so, it's a pivotal moment to check in and reconsider whether you want to re-up the commitment or, or not, because the commitment to this road project was made in the Putney Road Master Plan process. That's why it gets mentioned in this report. So, in other words, the V-Trans design team takes, and, and the project team takes very strong, a very strong interest in public support, and they're not inclined to pursue something if they confront a lot of mixed feelings or opposition. So far, what they've, what they understand they've got is very strong support for alternative three, right? And on the record, the record shows very strong support for alternative three. So, if we're going to re, if you're, if you're involved in reconsidering, then that needs to be thought of carefully and conveyed carefully. And...
So, Rod, if, if the state, I mean, the state coming for the next consideration of this, if they have, in the last three years, have altered their estimates and all that, won't that come to bear?
I'd say that they would still fill up...
Treat us in isolation from all that.
They won't, but they, they would still take the commitment of the community very, I mean, that's weighted very seriously. So, you know...
But not over...
I mean, I couldn't speak...
Traffic studies, I mean...
Well, three years is like that is the outward limit of validity to a traffic.
No, I'm, I'm saying they would do a new traffic...
They'd have to do a new traffic study.
And, and there would be another recommendation, I would think, right?
But why do we want to put V-Trans through all that process? Because if we don't think that it now is commensurate with the Putney Road Plan, with the Putney Road Master Plan, if we don't believe that it's appropriate in light of all these things, then why don't we circumvent V-Trans's money and time and expense that they're going to take to do that and say, hey, we're beating you to the chase here because we don't think this is appropriate now, and we want to save you the money of going through steps one through four. And we'll tell you right now, we'd like to downsize the Putney Road Plan and get the brownie points that you would get by telling V-Trans that we want less of a road, because...
But more, arguably more of what you want. I mean, I would...
More of what we want, and maybe go to include more landscaping or other good things that we might decide we want.
And just on your remark before, I, you know, the question of zoning the land at the north end, at the north, you know, the top end between Black Mountain Road and the roundabout one way, and then that presenting traffic access issues with the road, the way it's currently configured and the, and the way the road would be configured if it has a roundabout, I mean, all those things are really important observations, and they would need to be worked through with any, with any plan, whether it's alternative three or another plan. And I, and I think that one of the things that comes out of looking at it very closely is that the drawings that are provided in the master plan, and to some extent occur in, in the engineer's consideration of the three alternatives, shows very generic drawings, very densely built out with lots of trees and not a lot of specificity, and completely transformed in terms of parcel size and the nature of the buildings and where the parking is located compared to the current situation. And it's difficult to conceive of how to get from the current situation to those pictures without really dramatic, large-scale land development, where you're amassing parcels and drawing new boundary lines, and you're demolishing existing buildings, and you're constructing large numbers of buildings all at once, and repositioning parking and, and infrastructure in a very large scale that Brattleboro, I don't think, has any experience of. And the market is not showing any signs of, of really wanting to facilitate. So, it would have to be a public entity that does that. I don't think V-Trans is at all considering taking that role on. So, then you get back to the question of, well, what's the issue there now? And the issue there now is poorly planned access, fairly random access, little control over the access, poorly structured and designed intersections with poorly, with poorly crafted signalization, which is the kind of thing that you get on strip mall development, you know, ad hoc, you know?
Piecemeal.
Yeah. You just, it's happened over time. So...
But I guess, you know, what I recall is that, looking at the alternatives, they determined that short of alternative three, the level of service was not going to get addressed. And I, you know, I'm sorry to be the...
Right.
...beater of this drum, but I'm not a traffic engineer. I know a couple. They were very thorough in this.
Right.
And that was their point, you know, pedestrian and bike, level of service, those were the things. And, you know, if you look at each of the intersections, you know, Home Depot is closed. So, that has changed the flow in and out of that plaza. But do we want that to be the case from now on? Is nothing going to go in there? Maybe not. You know, if that's the case, then don't change the intersection, you know? Don't change the road. You know, I'm, I, I don't agree with this. And, you know, for different reasons at different intersections. I'm not talking about the whole plan, but it wasn't just, you know, an endorsement of a particular thing. There's a lot of parts to that plan. And I, I, I sort of, you know, it may not be the right plan now, but for another plan to happen, there are going to have to be traffic studies, you know? There's going to have to be planning.
Yes.
You know, I mean, I, I would say, you know, yeah, if, if V-Trans is thinking about not planning, we should tell them to plan, you know? And, but they're not thinking of that. I mean, they, you know, with all due respect, I don't think we'll earn any brownie points from V-Trans because I think they've got to do that plan, you know? Even to, to not do what the alternative that was determined, you know, at three years ago, to not do that, I think they have to replan, I think.
Well, you, they'll never have the road unless it's determined that there's a purpose and need for it.
Right.
And so, determining whether there's purpose and need is, is what we can do now. I mean, we could choose to now say that we're rethinking it and that in the future, we can have a traffic engineer review and revisit it. But if we get it out there now that we're rethinking it and take it off the list, I would think that that would be a good thing.
But I would maintain that the purpose and needs, part of it was not, the future plan is not even in the purpose and need state. It wasn't, you know?
You just stay on the list. It'll just be different.
I think it's a good idea to do. I mean, no matter what, you're making the space more desirable to people in the community and potential developers, investors, whatever you want to say. You know, it's a lot of money, and maybe it doesn't need to be done to the extent, you know, nineteen million dollars with a roundabout, maybe it's just the traffic lights. But are we in agreement that it needs to be improved as far as how it, how it functions and how it addresses the community and pedestrians and bikes most certainly?
Yes.
What is it?
The plan. The plan, the road plan needs to be approved.
Some road plan.
So, is that, I guess, that's the question, is that an option to downscale it, to make it so that it's not as elaborate as far as four roundabouts, maybe it's two, or whatever the traffic engineers suggest? Is that an option?
Is any change back to zero?
No. No, I, I think, you know, I definitely think that we need to discuss this some more. I'm, I'm sensitive to the time here, but I, I think the purpose and need statement that's contained in the report that was included in your packets ranks, traffic mobility and safety is the first item, bicycle and pedestrian accommodations is the second, and aesthetics and community character is the third.
Yeah.
So, there's no, you know, there, there's some, there's some, there's some pretty close, you know, overlap here, is what I'm trying to get at. You know, there's not, there's not a huge difference in what they're trying to do from what we're considering here. I think the question... I think the question is whether the preferred solution that they're proposing in this report, alternative three, that's also then subsequently endorsed by the select board and the planning commission separately, is justified, and whether it actually does address in more detail the things that this group and others think is really important, mostly the aesthetics and community character and the bicycle and pedestrian accommodations. So I don't think anyone's suggesting that doing nothing is, is, is okay for the likely outcome. I think there's an acknowledgement on the part of V-Trans as sort of the owners of the road, if you like, that it's inadequate, and that it doesn't meet current expectations. And I think there's certainly recognition on the part of the people of Brattleboro, including the property owners along Putney Road, that it doesn't meet their needs either. So the question becomes, how do you state or restate what you, as a planning commission, think are the important planning, um, issues or facts that are different now from when this report was written, if there is a difference? And what difference, what if, and if there is a difference in your expectations, not just for the road project, but for the land that it, that it serves? I think we've established that you do have different expectations for the land the road serves, and so it's a matter of just conveying clearly to V-Trans through the, through the master plans, through the town plan, I should say, um, what your expectations for the road should be, that you, and that could be as simple as, you know, making it a statement that commits to bicycle and pedestrian accommodations, aesthetics and community character as the two most important items, and, you know, traffic mobi, traffic mobility as the third, right? And then say, you know, and, you know, I don't want to put words in your mouth here, but I'm trying, what I'm trying to do is resolve this issue so that we can move on.
I think we need a whiteboard or chalkboard or something.
There's one right there.
A list, the purposes are...
We can all make a list.
Of what?
Let me just point out, it's twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine.
Are you thinking that we ought to resolve this tonight, Brad?
Um, I don't necessarily, I, I think people's, what's interesting to me sitting here is that people have voiced, have, have expressed their views pretty clearly. If I get this right, you know, maybe, maybe what would be useful now is to take a straw poll of people's disposition regarding the road plan, and then ask what you think people want to do about it, once you've got that established. I mean, I don't get a sense here that there's, you know, I think the majority of commissioners appear to be voicing concern about alternative three. So then the question becomes, how do you take that concern and work it through?
Because if the town plan, just have to say we want to explore that in the future, that the, that the needs are still the same, those three things that you just said...
Those...
Are still important.
Yes.
But how they get resolved, we would like to relook at again, because we're, because of all these market things and blah, 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 we would like it to be relooked at again at a fut, I mean, we don't have to do that now.
No.
But that the town plan states that we want to look, look at it again, and maybe with a V-Trans person here when we do that at a public meeting, I mean, who knows?
Well, if, for instance, if there was a, a new purpose and needs statement to be written, that would be a public, you know...
That would be a public process itself, right.
And it would involve some months, and, you know, and that, you know, you would think that they would redo it. I mean, you know, it's, I mean, in this whole process, from the beginning, everybody understood that it was a twelve-year process at best, and probably closer to twenty, you know, and probably closer to never, really. And so, that's seems to be coming true.
Saying how it just did it, we did it.
But, you know, the, the, the fact is that, you know, it did start, you know, if you look way back, it started twenty-five years ago.
Right.
But at least this iteration of it started, you know, seven or eight years ago, and everybody knows that, you know, the people that were there at the beginning are not going to be there at the end.
Right.
And so I don't know how they revive the corpse every time, you know? But, um, I'm certainly not going to be there at the end.